Okay, go ahead and reconvene the special meeting of the Folsom City Council. Do we have any action to report, Mr. City Attorney?
No further action.
Okay, with that, we'll adjourn the special meeting of the Folsom City Council and call it over to the regular meeting of the Folsom City Council for Tuesday, November 27th. If the clerk, please call a roll.
Council members Gaylord.
Here.
Howell.
Here.
Morin.
Here.
Sheldon.
Here.
And Miklos.
Here. If you please rise and join for your pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, everyone, thank you for coming out this evening. The clerk, go through the next item, please.
Next item is agenda update, and there are two items. One is a revised agenda report for item 6I. The other is a supplemental information item 8A, and they've been provided to the city council and on the back table for the public.
Okay, so we've got the agenda updates. Next item, please.
Next item is business from the floor, and you have two speakers.
Okay, go ahead and call them.
First speaker is Mike Barnbaum, and the next speaker will be Stephanie Haley.
Okay, as he's coming up, business from the floor has items that are not on the agenda, so if the city council looks like we're not responding to you, it's because we have not advertised them as an agenda item, so we cannot make commentary as far as our positions and stuff, only give direction to staff. So with that, good evening, Mike.
Good evening, thank you. At your last meeting, of course, was the adoption of the annexation of the city of Folsom into Sacramento Regional Transit District. And at that meeting, it was announced and made mention that on Monday, November 19th, there was going to be a Paratransit Incorporated Board of Directors meeting, but if folks were not able to attend that one, their next opportunity would not be until Wednesday, January 30th, in the next calendar year, 2019. So I'm here to report some good news and bad news relating to a lot of boards and commissions adopting calendars for next year. You have an official sheet of paper in front of you with Paratransit's international logo and a calendar, so I need to make a little footnote on that, as it's important to report out from attending their meeting. When they went to the consent calendar to adopt the entire consent calendar, they did not have a quorum. So they only agreed upon consensus from that list you have in front of you, that the next meeting is confirmed for January 30th at 6:00 PM at their headquarters at 2501 Florin Road at Woodbine in South Sacramento. All other meetings listed after January 30th are only for information but are not official because they did not have a quorum to adopt the entire calendar. Sincerely apologize for that, but I know that there was a comment made during the item about annexing into regional transit, that there are a lot of folks interested in this group in particular, the Paratransit Incorporated Board of Directors. They have promised, assuming that they're going to gather up a quorum on Wednesday, January 30th, that they will adopt the remaining dates on that list that you have in front of you for their calendar of meetings for the entire calendar year. And the only reason they moved from January 21st, the third Monday, which is what you have in front of you for the rest of the months that they plan on meeting, to January 30th, Monday, January 21st, is being recognized as a national holiday. Because it's the third Monday of January, it's traditionally the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. holiday. And on consensus, it was just agreed upon that everyone's calendar worked out for Wednesday, the 30th, for their next meeting. So I know you probably wanted to put this on your website and have it as a copy for each of you as a council member, and I'll make sure that Sarah and Mike, at the next meeting, get a copy of this as well. But yeah, I just want to make that disclosure, that because the group did not have a quorum on November 19th, the only meeting that's official for now for next year is January 30th, and we hope to make that correction for the rest of the calendar year on that date. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Right.
Next speaker is Stephanie Haley.
Hello, I just wanted to be here tonight because I saw Folsom Heights was on you guys' agenda, and I just want to come and hear everything that's happening on Folsom Heights, because it looks like it's moving along pretty rapidly. And the last six months, I haven't heard anything on the EVA, the Emergency Vehicle Access Road behind, on the border of El Dorado and Sacramento County, the beginning of the first phase of Folsom Heights. So I'm here just to, I know I can't get any information, but just wanted to know, Stonebriar Rowd here, we still would like to have some input of what that's going to consist of as a material-wise, where we left off about six months ago, before they do start construction of that road. And maybe they can reevaluate that again, after the last two weeks of tragedy in the state of California, about the access to that road and behind the homes, and maybe trying to keep that as some type of a buffer, like it is right now, for the communities. Not that it's going to make any difference right now, but we just want to make sure we're involved with that construction, the material of that road, which we were promised in a meeting six months ago, that we would get some type of notice to be involved in that, and when it's going to start, and also just put out, and we're just kind of, whole Stonebriar, I'm going to talk for all my community, of the White Rock Road not being widened yet, and all the homes that are already being developed, and families going in there, and we still don't have the White Rock Road on Sacramento County line widened yet. Thank you.
Next item, please.
Next item is the consent calendar.
Anybody wishing to pull anything off consent?
I'll move consent.
Second.
Can you get a motion on, and a second on consent is revised for item I, so call a roll, please.
Council members Howell.
Yes.
Gaylord.
Yes.
Morin.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Miklos.
Yes. Okay, next item?
Next item is public hearing. Item 7A is CFD 22, Folsom Heights. Resolutions 10216 through 10220, and first reading of ordinance 1290.
Sir, good evening. We get to do this again.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor. If you'd give me a moment.
No, no hurry.
Somebody left their presentation up there.
Share and share alike, right?
Yeah. I can give you the one about the lights, if he wants to do this.
Careful what you wish.
Okay, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm John Donahue, Deputy Treasurer. As you may recall, on October 23rd, in response to a petition from Folsom Heights LLC to form a Community Facilities District Number 22, the council considered and passed the resolutions listed here declaring its intention to form the district, levy taxes within the district, and declared the necessity to incur bonded indebtedness. Tonight is the last step in the process to form CFD Number 22. This formation is subject to the Melrose Act and city policies regarding land-secured financing districts. Here we have the boundary map, which as displayed is turned about 90 degrees counterclockwise, so the top of this map would be east. The CFD was composed of the entire eastern border of the plan area, from Highway 50 to the north, to White Rock Road to the south, and to the west of this lies the Russell Ranch The expected development within CFD Number 22 is anticipated to include approximately 530 residential units in the various categories as described on this slide, as well as 11.4 acres of commercial property. CFD Number 22 is intended to provide funding for public facilities financing planned backbone infrastructure and facilities, including related environmental mitigation obligations. A comprehensive list of eligible infrastructure and facilities is listed in Exhibit A of the resolution of formation. These items include water and wastewater improvements, transportation, drainage, park, parkway, and open space improvements, as well as payment of the specific planned infrastructure fee program obligation. Currently, El Dorado Irrigation District is expected to own the water and wastewater improvements, so a resolution approving a joint community facilities agreement between the city, the developer, and EID is before the council tonight. This agreement pertains solely to the water and wastewater facilities to be financed by CFD Number 22. This agreement does not extend to the maintenance of these facilities; that responsibility will lie solely with EID. Finally, CFD Number 22 also includes project-specific maintenance services, which include its landscape corridors, enhanced open space, and streetlight maintenance. A complete list of the services provided is included as Exhibit B to the resolution Some of the features of CFD Number 22 include an extended term going out to 2070, financing from either bond proceeds or Pago revenue. The maximum facilities tax will be levied upon a building permit being pulled. The Pago is 100% to the developers for the first 20 years, and then 100% to the city if required, similar to the prior CFDs we formed in the plan area. And the city council retains the right, after the debt service has been paid, to extend, discontinue, or reduce the maximum special tax. The facility special tax, as mentioned, can be levied through 2070 at city council discretion. The special tax rates will increase annually by 2%. The maximum facility special tax rates range from $2,000 to $2,900, depending on residential category, and the debt limit for this district is $40 million. The CFD Number 22 services special tax can be levied in perpetuity at city council discretion. The services special tax rate will increase annually by the CPI index listed, and not to exceed 4% a year. The maximum services special tax rate is $400 for all residential units. CFD Number 22, the property tax as a percentage of the estimated assessed value is 1.83% for all residential categories. This rate is below the 2% policy threshold approved by the council. So finally, tonight, we would recommend that the city council conduct a public hearing, approve the resolution of formation for CFD Number 22, and the resolution deem it necessary to incur bonded indebtedness, approve the resolutions calling for an election and declaring the results of this election, introduce and provide the first reading of the ordinance levying the special tax, and approve the resolution approving a joint community facilities financing agreement with the El Dorado Irrigation District. So with that, I will take any questions.
Any questions, staff, before I open the public hearing? Okay, see none, I'll go ahead and now open the public hearing for the purposes of the formation of the city of Folsom's Community Facilities District Number 22, Folsom Heights, the district, the extent of such district, the furnishing of specified types of public facilities and public services within the district, the proposed rate and method of apportionment of the special tax to be levied within the district, and the proposed incurrence of bonded indebtedness in connection with the district. Madam Clerk, has notice of this hearing been given in accordance with applicable law?
Yes, as required by the Melrose Community Facilities Act and by prior resolution of this council, notice of this hearing was published once in the Folsom Telegraph on November 15th, 2018, and notice was mailed to the landowners within the district on November 8th, 2018.
Okay, so the public hearing is now officially opened. I don't believe we have a request to speak, but if anyone would like to speak on this item, please come forward. See nobody racing down the aisles. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Okay, so the...
I'll move Resolution 10216.
We have some more to go.
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry. For those that don't know, we have to follow a very specific script in order to meet all the requirements of law for this one, so bear with me, do the best I can. So we, excuse me, so I've closed the public hearing, so Madam Clerk, does a majority protest exist against the formation of district, against the furnishing of a specified type or types of public facilities or public services to serve the district, or against levying the specified special tax within the district?
No, right here, right here.
You're right here.
No written protests have been received from the landowners within the district, therefore, a majority protest does not exist.
At this time, because a majority protest does not exist, it is appropriate for the city council to consider resolutions to form a district, to declare the necessity to incur bonded indebtedness within the district, and to call a special election within the So pursuant to Resolution Number 10218, the election for the incurring of the bonded indebtedness, the levy of the special tax, and establishment of the appropriations limit for the district is now open, and the city clerk may conduct the election. Madam Clerk, have you received the ballot from the landowner in the district?
Yes.
Keep going.
I have received the ballot, and finding that all ballots in the election have been submitted, do declare the election closed.
Okay, could the clerk please canvas the ballots?
Yes. I have completed the canvas of the ballot for the special election related to the district held on November 27th, 2018. The canvas was as follows. 175 votes were cast in support of the measure, and zero votes were cast in opposition to the measure. Therefore, the measure was approved with a 100% vote in favor.
Okay. So now it's a consideration of resolution approving a joint, approving a joint community facilities agreement with El Dorado Irrigation District. Don't do that.
Resolution 10216.
Yes, sir.
Would you consider motions, second, with respect to resolutions 10216, 10217, 10218?
That's a different page in my script.
Please, thank you.
Okay, so we need motions for the following resolutions. I think, Carrie, you were jumping in on one, so why don't you take the first one?
Yep. I'll move Resolution 10216.
Got a motion, a second, call a roll on that item, please.
Council members Gaylord.
Yes.
Howell.
Yes.
Morin.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Miklos.
Yes.
I'll move 10217.
Second.
Motion, a second, and call a roll on that item, please.
Council members Gaylord.
Yes.
Howell.
Yes.
Morin.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Miklos.
Yes.
I'll move 10218.
Second.
Call a roll on that item, please.
Council members Gaylord.
Yes.
Howell.
Yes.
Morin.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Miklos.
Yes.
I'll move ordinance 1290, introduction and first reading.
Second.
Call a roll on that item, please.
Council members Gaylord.
Yes.
Howell.
Yes.
Morin.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Miklos.
Yes.
I'll move Resolution 10220.
Second.
Call the item, please.
Council members Gaylord.
Yes.
Howell.
Yes.
Morin.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Miklos.
Yes.
I believe that concludes the public hearing on these items.
With that, Madam Clerk, call the next item.
Your next item is new business, item 8A, a presentation on the opportunity to light the upstream side of the Lake Natoma Crossing Bridge and provide direction to staff.
Good evening, Dave.
Good evening. Let me pull this up, since somebody closed out my presentation here.
He was willing to trade with you.
Payback, I guess. Good evening, Mayor Miklos, Dave Nugent, your Public Works Director. Tonight, we're here to seek some direction on the item before you tonight, on lighting the upstream side of the Lake Natoma Bridge. As you all know, the Lake Natoma Crossing was constructed back in 1999, and will be celebrating 20 years next year, so it's been 20 years already, if you can believe that. At the time of the construction, it was contemplated to actually light the arches of the bridge to show off its aesthetic features, to complement Rainbow Bridge, and at the time, the technology and the fixtures needed to do that were just a little bit too cumbersome in the cost to do that, and those items were essentially deleted from the construction. However, all the infrastructure to provide lighting of the arches and the bridge itself were actually installed, so all the conduits and all the appurtenances to get power out there to do that were actually installed at the time. So we're here tonight because, over the years, a number of folks have approached the city to investigate lighting the structure, and most recently, probably in the last five years or so, the LED technology has really come a long ways, and we have representatives from Phillips Lighting who have approached the city to demonstrate some of their technology and the means by which some of the lighting can be done now. Tonight, we have Marina Light with Phillips Technology, or Phillips Lighting. She is the Business Development, Vice President of Business Development for Phillips, and she'll be giving a presentation on some of the structures that have been lit, not only around the country, but around the world, and what those look like, what the potentials are. We received a couple of letters today to speak to the supplemental information from the Save the American River Association, and I just wanted to make it very clear, we're not taking any action on any environmental coverage, or any environmental action tonight. This is simply just seeking direction from your council. So with that, I will turn it over to Marina and let her take it away. I teed it up for you.
Okay, good, stand nearby.
I'll be by.
For the technical support. So happy to be with you tonight. I don't know if you caught that, my name is Marina Light, and I work for Phillips Lighting, but I'm also a longtime Folsom resident, and stood with many of you, at least three of you, when the ribbon-cutting ceremony happened in 1999. And since beginning work with Phillips Lighting, I've drive over that bridge, and I just think about how spectacular it might be to light it. I work on these kinds of projects all over the country, and see what an amazing difference, and very positive impacts that these types of projects bring to their cities. Phillips Lighting, we are a global company. We light all kinds of structures around the world, and I just wanted to show you a few bridges. There's a very famous bridge in Vietnam, the Dragon Bridge, and right here in our beautiful state of California, the Bay Bridge, and some of you might be familiar with this project. It's actually the largest art installation of lighting in the world right now, and San Francisco loved this project so much, it was originally put up as a temporary installation, and was scheduled to be decommissioned and taken down, and the city loved it so much, they actually went through all the efforts to light the bridge again, and this is now a permanent installation in San Francisco. This is just a few other bridges I wanted to show you of some of the work. I pulled a few things that show you bridges with arches, like what we enjoy here in Folsom, and you can see how spectacular. The lighting now is dynamic, you can program these lights to do all kinds of different things, lighting light shows, you can light for different events, for the high school team, for 4th of July, Veterans Day, all kinds of activities. I love these, you know, this is reminiscent of our, of the Walker Bridge, I just wanted to show you the picture. We commissioned a report to explore why communities light bridges, and it's true, there's terrific enhanced public safety from these types of projects, enhanced public use of the bridges. It's a huge economic development driver for cities, promotes healthy living and lifestyles. I know something important to all of us who live here in Folsom, community pride, and there's city branding that goes along with this. The report, I have a copy, I can leave with you all. This was an impact evaluation and analysis, where we studied actually four different types of lighting projects, and took a look at the direct effects on industry within a city, and then indirect effects, business-to-business spending, and then also increased household spending. And so there's a lot of metrics throughout the report, including social and cultural contributions throughout the cities. I'm not going to tell you every little detail of the report, you can certainly take a look for yourself, but I'll highlight just a couple of projects. This is Little Rock, Arkansas, similar to Folsom, they have four bridges. We have three here, they have four bridges, they lit all four of them as part of the celebration for their utility, and President Clinton was actually there to flip the switch on these bridges. One of the bridges leads to the Presidential Library. From their investment in this project, they, we were able to quantify over $19 million in increased tourism to the area, lots of national media coverage, but it was a real revitalization project for Little Rock, actually turned that city into quite a conference destination. It's now recognized as a city of distinction for tourism development. I talked a little bit already about San Francisco. This was an amazing project to look at the economic impact. We were able to quantify $570,000 in tax revenue to date at the time of the report, the economic impact of $18 million. What's amazing about this bridge also is it's so revered online, there's all kinds of social media activity that happens around this bridge. There's over 100,000 videos on YouTube just about this bridge. The revenue went up for restaurant business. You can see that kind of activity on Yelp and those kinds of social media apps, where people will say, "Love the restaurant, great food, but be sure to go at night, so you can see the lights on the bridge." The other thing that San Francisco has and does that I think we have a lot of potential for here in Folsom is sort of this light and art tourism. It's a top 10 destination in the world now as a light art place, and also, people will go on walking tours to see 18 other different lighting installations in San Francisco. We have a lot of opportunity here with the Johnny Cash Trail and some of our other projects. As Dave mentioned, the LED technology's come a long way. This bridge is using now 85% less energy, and all of that cost is actually offset through a solar credit donation. I want to show you a video of another project, and this is in Memphis, Tennessee. They had two bridges, these are huge bridges, so it's not exactly like what we have here, but they just lit, we just celebrated with a big ceremony and a lot of pomp and circumstance, their second bridge. You can see the two bridges here, that they're side by side, so both of these bridges are now lit. This is about the first project, and I just hit play, I hit the spacebar. This is three minutes, I like to tell people, "How long is the video?" It's three minutes long, but it'll tell you a little about some of the other impacts in the community.
Nearly a mile over the Mississippi River, Big River Crossing links Memphis, Tennessee with West Memphis, Arkansas. Also known as the Harahan Bridge, it represents the longest pedestrian bridge across the Mississippi, and is part of a larger reinvigoration campaign to beautify and unify the city. The new dynamic lighting installation is expected to enhance the vibrant riverfront and celebrate the Mississippi River and its surrounding landscape.
It's an important project for the region because it brings two communities together. The outriggers themselves were formerly used as motive transportation for cars. Big River Crossing was not without its challenges, because it also happens to be an active railway
Quality LED lighting provides a uniform wash of warm white light, bringing out the golden color of the bridge. Because the bridge is constantly in use by watercraft and train traffic, it was vital that the lighting could be remotely adjusted with short notice.
The Coast Guard was a very important stakeholder in this project. It was important for us to make sure that barges could travel safely underneath the crossing, and to do this, we implemented controls, so that when barges passed underneath the crossing, the lights dimmed.
The bridge is typically lit in an amber hue, but colors and light shows can also be adjusted remotely for holidays and special occasions.
If the city of Memphis basketball game, and they won, and they informed us that they wanted the bridge on the Memphis colors, I could create a show and upload it. The active site is a powerful tool for monitoring a system as large as this, because every day, it looks for 9,454 devices, along with the controller, to make sure everything is online.
The bridge is part of a larger 10-mile revitalization project along and across the Mississippi River.
The capabilities of the LED technology that Phillips incorporated into this bridge is simply phenomenal. Light is security. It makes people feel safe, and it's very inviting, and that's what we've accomplished. And I... And I've seen the transformation firsthand of what that has meant towards generating new life and activity.
People come in and rent bikes from us and they want to go across the bridge to see the city.
Here, I think it's kind of neat because you've got the old with the new.
The bridge and the lights allow us to really just enjoy the experience of being outside and being together. And something that we didn't really get to do before.
So the lighting of this bridge was enormous for us.
People will come down to the park just for the light shows.
Beautiful.
It's really connected the two cities.
I think the bridge brought a lot more people in touch with the river, and that's a good thing.
When you're out on the crossing, the lights are on, you see the skyline. It's just an amazing experience.
Okay, now, oh, good, thank you. All right, so we had our engineering team take a look at the Lake Natoma Crossing. We have a few renderings to show you what our bridge could look like lit up.
Close it.
After we watched that other video.
The mouse isn't working very well.
Spacebar, spacebar.
There we go.
Oh, great, okay. So here we go. So we have a few images of the bridges. It's just a white light. Our famous Fourth of July rodeo. Our beautiful Rainbow Bridge, celebrating 100 years coming up. It's amazing, both the bridges have birthdays coming. I am delighted to introduce David Ferriol from our team. He's on our technical team, works throughout the state of California. Just going to have him share a couple of points about the system that potentially could be designed for the bridge.
Good evening. Thank you very much. One of the things I would like to mention is, and everybody I'm here, here has probably seen it, is on the Bay Bridge lights, the Bay Lights, you will never see the same program twice when you go down there. Because it's actually focused on traffic conditions, weather conditions, and maritime conditions. So when you see the clouds going across or any of the shapes that work on the bridge, that will never be the same twice in a row. And there's 100,000 light points on that bridge, we track every single one of them. We have a 10-year contract with Caltrans, actually with BADA, the Bay Area Toll Authority, for maintenance of that bridge. So for the next 10 years, you'll never see the bridge go down, you'll never see the lights be out, and it's all remotely maintained. For your bridge, and I think you saw it on the Harahan Bridge, we have a couple of different products that we're recommending. One is Color Grays, the other is Color Blast, and then the last is Intellihue Flex Light. These devices are, first of all, very, very energy efficient. In comparison to the existing lighting of most any bridge that you'd be looking at, these, for example, the Intellihue Flex Elite, that is about a half a watt of power. So very cost-effective. The other aspect of it is, there's no limit to the amount of colors that can be produced by these devices. So as it says here, 16.7 million, and that's just simply unfathomable to us to have that type of ability. The other aspect of it is, is these shows can be very dynamic, as you saw on the Harahan Bridge. They can wipe, they can sweep, they can adjust, you can dim. Typically, these lighting installations do not run all night long. They run a few hours in the evening and then are typically shut off before midnight. So you don't have them operating all night long. And then, of course, you can do all the programming that is special for the city of Folsom. So when the football team wins, when there's an event coming up, you can certainly do that. And it'll all be done remotely. So that's the benefit of this technology. It's all remote diagnostic, remote programming, and very, very cost-effective in terms of energy use. That's it for me.
Okay, good. Thank you. That was what we wanted to share for this evening with you all, and happy to answer questions. Oh, this, this is a quick slide, just showing you the social media activity that starts happening around these kinds of projects. We're in process, actually, of developing a way for cities to track what's happening with their lighting installation. They'll know what's being photographed and where and what people are saying about it. So this is a little glimpse of the future. Thank you very much.
Any questions?
Actually, I just had one. What's the, how do you guys quantify or like produce a tangible ROI for this? What are the metrics?
Well, that's a little bit what we were getting after in the economic impact study, where we're trying to quantify with regard to uptick in restaurant business-to-business spending. Some cities have actually, every city is different, but some cities have actually started programs where people, families or households or event groups could pay a nominal fee to have the bridge colored in a certain way for their family reunions or things like that. So, yeah.
Interesting. Any questions for her while she's here? So Dave, we'll have you come back up. So as I remember, obviously, when a bridge was built, we anticipated doing something. We put the infrastructure in for that, and of course, I guess it's actually a better time to be talking about it because of the fact that the energy is such, is such more efficient. What I saw was that if we light the bridge, it's actually less light emissions reflection, if you will, on the water than the current light posts that are out there.
Yeah.
Is that a fair assessment?
I think that would have to be, you know, research to quantify that amount. Currently, we're in the process of retrofitting the streetlights that are on the bridge itself, and we're looking at an energy savings of, you know, 80% just by replacing those lights. And I was speaking with the gentleman earlier.
Is that just replacing the fixture? Is that, you're not talking about replacing the poles, you're just talking about the light bulbs?
Just the fixtures themselves, switching over to LED.
Okay.
Currently, they're high-pressure sodium and they use a lot of, I mean, with the amount of energy savings we would save by retrofitting the existing streetlights, we could power this easily.
So, and the new, the new lights will be more, more white as opposed to yellow?
Yeah, we're currently looking at 3,000K color, if you're familiar with LED lighting or less.
Okay.
Currently, it's probably 2,500, 2,400. It's an orange, high-pressure sodium color.
So do these LEDs, if this was to happen, does this replace the current, the LEDs you're now putting in?
No.
No, I'm talking specifically here, let me go back to...
The lights that are on the roadway are for the roadway. This other stuff won't affect the lighting on the roadway itself.
Right. These are, this type of lighting is under the soffit of the bridge and/or on the arches or on the columns. And, you know, I think that it's safe to say that there's, this is one example of a possibility. You know, you could go with more of a broadcast light. This is showing the string lights on the arches to highlight the arches. There's all sorts of different types of lighting schemes that could be done with this.
Okay, now I'm ready. I'm fairly familiar with lights because I'm a sports guy. And we advocate lighting fields so kids can play in evenings and stay at home. And we've done a pretty good job of that. But we learned over the 30 years, 35 years I've been here, how the technology progresses and it gets better. Because when we lit our first field at Lundy Park, the lights were on Gary's court, lit up the backyard of one of her neighbors. And we got an email that said, "What are you doing to my backyard?" And we thought it was crazy because it's quite a ways from Lundy Park.
It's probably close to a mile.
Maybe more. And we went over there, Gary Mann, myself, and Linda Page, at the end of a park meeting to see this crazy man that was telling us that. Well, he wasn't crazy. We walked in his backyard, it was like daylight, and we couldn't imagine that that happened. Well, we learned how the shield lights on that one field. But technology, when we built the football field over at Livermore, we did not do a good job of protecting the wetlands next to the football field nor the street, all the houses right across from the football field. Because when we turned the lights on, we lit up their yards and the wetlands. When we redid the football field to do it into artificial turf, we spent an additional $100,000. The lights were still good, but we spent $100,000 because by the time we upgraded it to turf, the technology had improved to the point that we then, there was no bleeding the lights onto the neighborhood, not, you can go out there now and the lights are not on the homes, on the field. The same thing with the wetland, which has a lot of animals in that area. We took care of the problem of disturbing animals. But the thing that I noticed on the presentation, which is not uncommon, every time we see a presentation primarily by the chamber, which is what they do, it's big cities. Those bridges were enormous, okay? We don't have an enormous bridge here. We have quaint bridges here. We have waterways under our bridges that are quaint. And as we say, and we have a city manager in this thing, a past city manager in our audience tonight, that coined a phrase that indicates why we are what we are, distinct by nature. And that's because we are, we're distinct. Those big bridges I saw on that display are big bridges, and I can see where they'd be tremendously attractive. So I think we have to do a tremendous job of being patient, looking hard, and being sure that we don't step into an area that we have no business being in. You know, you can always look up at our big brother and say, "Ah, I wish I was as big as he is." But maybe we all don't have to be that big to be affected. And so I just caution us to take our, you know, some of our biggest battles in the 30-some years I've been here were on lights, lights in the mall, lights on the roadway, dark skies and all that stuff. Through the biggest crowds in this, not necessarily this one, but the previous ones, as to discussion on lights. And a lot of it was the comfort of the people and also our animals, that we do have a lot in this town. So I just caution us to be very, very slow and methodical. And, but look at technology, you don't be scared of it because we have done that in the world of sports in this town. And you can see Economy Park is another one that we can point to with pride. We had a lot of concern for the neighbors, and I think that concern has been put aside because we don't bleed into their homes and destroy their quality of life. That's what we got to do. And when we talk about quality of life, we're talking about us, us humans. But there's a quality of life that we have obligation to our animals, you know, that we encourage to be a part of our community. So all I say is, and I'm not sure, I'm sure we're going to hear more conversation, but I know tonight is just what you said, Dave. It's a direction, think about it, what do you think type deal. So that's, I just want to open the conversation with that tender kind of comment.
Roger, anything?
I like the, I like it, but to Ernie's point, you know, we got to make sure it's, the impacts are weighed and also the cost of it. I don't even know if we even had a budget analysis of what something like this would be.
We haven't done any preliminary figures, and it would really depend on, you know, how robust of a lighting system you were looking at. You know, this is, like I said, one example. You know, you could go with something less. Leave that up to the, to the lighting experts.
I think it's fun. I think the, you know, it's kind of like the evolution of, you know, having existing items and making them, you know, funner, I guess you would say, but, and bringing folks together. And I'm curious, I want to see that, that report on the ROI, because if it's something that drives economic development from an easy installation that's already pre-wired, I mean, it's maybe something I'd like to look at, but...
Not pre-wired, just pre-conduit.
Conduit, whatever, same thing.
Yeah.
Not same thing.
We'd have way big wires in there, way too big wires in there right now if we were to wired it back then, but...
Oh, yeah, I think it's fun.
Just a quick comment. So, and you may have already mentioned this, so this, this is a, like, looking from Rainbow Bridge towards the Lake Natoma Crossing, correct? And is that kind of the, you know, kind of the initial idea here is it would just be that side?
Right, it would just be the upstream side. You know, it's, it has the most view shed for people to view it from. I think the downstream side, the view shed would be the folks that live up on the bluff or, you know, in Sacramento County.
Right.
That area. And obviously, there's, you know, there's that potential as well. But I think the initial idea was, you know, looking at the upstream side, viewing it from Rainbow Bridge, from the waterfront trail, you know, the Cliff House Restaurant area that, you know, along the bike trail.
Right. Yeah, I guess the other piece that intrigued me as far as, you know, trying to find a balance of things was the mention in the video there of, you know, just that, you know, this can, you know, I mean, it's completely controllable. So if this is something that was viewable in the evening for a certain number of hours and then, and then goes dark and stuff, there, you know, that might be a solution that makes everybody unhappy, something like that. But, but yeah, it's intriguing.
And I really like the fact that we're going to replace those existing lights on the roadway. I think it's, I frankly think it's kind of cool looking, and if we think that there's going to be that significant a cost savings on replacement of the existing lights, then I think it's something I'd like to see the numbers on.
Yeah, the operational maintenance of those fixtures, those high-pressure sodium, will pay for themselves in a couple of years. It's just, you know, they're constantly going out. LED technology lasts five to 10 years. The fixtures are guaranteed for 10 years. There's a huge cost savings. There's some initial capital outlay, but that's recaptured rather quickly.
Okay.
I'd like to comment one more thing.
Yep.
Ouch. As I get older, which I am, I like more light, not less light, okay? And I tell my son, "Turn the lights on, don't turn them off," okay? But you got to remember, LED lights are a lot brighter than what we deal with right now. And so when we, in, you know, doing, cost savings is no question, but we're getting more bang for the bang, you know? I mean, it's brighter.
Right.
And not only us, but all the animals around us are going to be affected by that.
And as I mentioned, it really depends on the color of the light. You know, you take these lights, for example, they're very piercing color, that's a high color. It's, you know, you know, yeah, those are, you know, 4,000K probably, or 3,500 Kelvin, which is the measurement of the color of the light. And, you know, I don't know what colors, you know, what, what color they were talking about on these and what the, how those would pierce, but that would obviously be something we would investigate and bring back to make sure that they're not too bright, where it actually, you know, you almost sense like you're hurting your eyes by looking at it. We don't want that, and we won't have that on our roadways as well. Intersections maybe, but not, not along roadways.
Okay, let's go ahead and call the speakers that have the request to speak on this item.
First speaker is... First speaker is Betsy Wieland, followed by Beverly Sales.
Good evening, City Council. Thank you for your time this evening, Mayor Mickliss. My name is Betsy Wieland, and I'm here representing Save the American River Association. And I, our letter went in because of the staff report, which I realize it did say "direction," but it also said the project would be CEQA exempt. And so that kind of raised our antenna because we would want the opportunity to be able to respond to any project through the CEQA process so that we're capturing all of the relevant impacts as well as consistency with federal and state laws, all of the planning documents that are in place, some of which actually are laws, such as the American River Parkway Plan, the Folsom Lake State Recreation Area Plan, Resource Plan, as well as the Managing Partners Agreement with, between the State of California Parks and, and the Bureau of Reclamation. So that, I want to make sure that as, you know, you deliberate, that there's direction to staff to go through a really robust process because it's necessary, and I think under the law, it's necessary. I just, a couple of quick points to make in response to, for, for your food for thought in response to the presentation. in response to the presentation. Don't forget that we're working within a state park, and we're working on a living river. You know, the examples of rivers that they presented, and Ernie, you were absolutely right, you know, the very large projects, they have tremendously developed their, their river fronts, and so perhaps they don't have what we have, which is our natural resources left, which is the ability to go out and interact with nature and all the wonderful animals and birds and things that are out there. Don't forget that our American River Parkway receives 5 million-plus visits per year. I will be submitting for you the Dangiermond Report. I don't wanna quote any figures tonight, but as far as economics is concerned, our American River Parkway draws people from all over the world and contributes many millions of dollars to our economic well-being in this region. So, and when, you know, night lighting for, don't forget that because we're in the state park, that the park closes at night. So, you know, there's, we don't really wanna be drawing people down there to, to be using the park at night. So these are just things that I'd like to, you know, just throw out there and for your consideration as you give direction to staff. But mainly, I just wanna make the point that we really need a robust process when we're deliberating this. Thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you. There you go. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Beverly Sales, and then there will be Jack Sales.
Hello, my name's Beverly Sales. As a retired teacher and just a concerned longtime resident of the area, I enjoy coming up to Folsom and driving over the Rainbow Bridge. The two rivers that we have in our area, we're lucky to have, they've been here longer than we have, longer than our cities have. But in driving over the Rainbow Bridge, I like to look down at the water, if I'm not driving, and I like to look up and down the, the river. And this is one of the open areas, you could still look up and down the river, and a lot of animals there. And if we're coming up here in the evening, I love to look down the river and see that sunset. And as the sun sets and the time, the lighting gets dim, the evening comes. And when there is a river, it needs to have its own nighttime. There's animals that live there, some sleep, some wake up. So I don't think that we need to just have everything for what we need, we need to think about the river and what's in the river. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jack Sales.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Council members. My name is Jack Sales. I bring 25 years of experience working with the lighting industry and advocating for good outdoor lighting that can preserve the night sky and night, night environment. I'm a member of the Illuminating Engineering Society in North America and the International Dark Sky Association. For the last few years, my focus has been on the impact of light pollution on the aquatic environment, with further focus on impacts on salmon predation resulting from light pollution, in particular, from bridges. And yes, I know quite a bit about bridge lighting. In fact, I have more copies of good and bad bridge lighting than anyone in this room. Most of what we've seen for us is not good lighting. We have a completely different environment. We have a, as Mr. Sheldon mentioned, we have a requirement to take care of our natural environment. So we need to be very careful. In my letter, I mentioned that we need to, to protect the American River Parkway and Lake Natomas, as well as Folsom Lake Recreation Area. We miss, we need to be, in, in this issue, we need to be moderate, we need to keep lighting down. If you look at that picture, you see the reflection off the water. Therefore, the light is impacting the water. The light is impacting the environment around the bridge. We had a presentation about the Oakland Bay Bridge. In my opinion, they totally ignored the biological opinion in regards to the impact that that bridge might have. The current bridge is, from that aspect, is overlet, and I'm happy to, that we're going to be making changes. And I'm really looking forward to working with staff about what we could do. We've had three bridges in Northern California with good outdoor lighting that protects salmon habitat, and I am concerned that lighting a bridge on the northern, or this section of the American River might impact what might happen in the Lower American River, where we do have salmon. And in fact, until recently, we didn't know that we have endangered salmon that rear in that American River.
Can you wrap up your thoughts for me, sir? Final thoughts?
So I'm, one of the things I encourage is, is to mitigate any lighting on this bridge, and like I say, I look forward to working with staff on, on this issue.
Thank you for coming out, appreciate it. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Barbara Leary, followed by Jennifer Lane.
Good evening, Barbara.
Good evening, good to see you all. I'm here as a resident who was also here 20 years ago to speak in favor of having those arches put on the bridge when C.C. Myers had intended to take them off, and I think a couple of you were sitting here at that time. So I'm back tonight to address my concerns about the additional lighting being placed on the bridge. I'm hoping that the council will consider the damage to the image as a small town that we have here. The lack of uniqueness of adding decorative lights has have been, you know, there's been a lot of examples shown tonight of a lot of cities with the same kind of lighting that's being proposed. And we already have three bridges that are very close to each other, each with lighting that reflects on the water and provides an interesting view. And there's enough lighting down there to walk safely at night, because I've done it to take photographs of the lights on the water, or the moon, or the sunset. I'm also concerned about the small-town feel that we have been touting for quite some time now. The lights that are proposed are more consistent with big-city lights, and I think that's something that we've been trying to avoid, is having a big-city feel to our town. These kind of lights are not consistent with historic and, historic and cultural aspects of our town, where campfires and dark skies dominated the landscape for hundreds of years. CEQA guidelines regarding historic, natural, and cultural resources need to be evaluated, and I don't think that this project is exempt. There is a known negative impact on the wildlife, that's already been discussed by others, but I won't go into it in detail, but I would hate to see a loss of the wildlife, like the bald eagles, and other things that are attracting people to come down and walk our trails and use our restaurants and other facilities in town. I'm also concerned about the cost. We're all well aware that there are budget shortfalls that have prevented the completion of our neighborhood parks and other city amenities. I think that was evidenced by the effort to pass a measure, a tax measure to be able to fund those. So I'm concerned about spending money on an unnecessary project while other projects go unaddressed. I real, I recognize there's differences of opinions on this issue, to some, the lights represent modern and sparkling image, as is present in many big cities. The examples up here were big cities that didn't have the natural aspects running along the riverbanks as we have here. To many of us, those lights can be intrusive and represent the march of development into our natural setting. So I personally find great value in our Parkway, in its more natural state. The existing arrangements of lighting on the three bridges are intriguing in person and in photographs of our town, and I'm urging the city not to pursue an intrusive lighting plan. If it is pursued, we need to examine the scenic, natural, cultural impacts and mitigation for those impacts. The development of a lighting ordinance would be in order.
Can you wrap it up for me now, Barbara?
I'm, I'm almost done.
Okay.
Two more sentences.
Okay.
I only used one minute the last time instead of three, so I'm, you know.
No, I'm giving you leeway.
Thank you. The development of lighting ordinance, I think, is in order to denote the type, color, brightness, and location of outdoor lighting. Shortened nighttime hours of operation or intermittent operation might be in order if you proceed with such a plan, and we need to consider that adjacent homes will be affected. And I think that's the end of my commentary. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And congratulations to you and Mr. Morn on your service.
Thank you.
The last speaker is Jennifer Lane.
Good evening.
Good evening. Well, I would say that all four speakers get a gold star from me. My background is in education. I taught my third and fourth graders ecology, ecosystems, the sensitivity of nature and how to protect it my whole career. It wasn't in the curriculum, I just did it. I took them out for walks behind Oak Chan and the, to learn about the fairy shrimp and the sensitivity that distinctive by nature our city seems to hold near and dear. Let's not, let's not give it away. That is a natural corridor protected by the state and the federal government. We have no business exploiting that area for our own glitz, so to speak. There's so many beautiful wildlife down there, anywhere from a tadpole to the birds that nest underneath the bridge, right where those lights, I'm guessing, would be with their mud nests. So migration for geese, they go over my house every year, 'cause I live in Old Town. So the four speakers have really nailed it, in, in my opinion, beautifully. So I don't need to say anymore other than, let's not forget parking in Old Town Folsom. We're still working on that. So to draw more people into Old Town without having that parking element figured out, this is insane. So thank you for your time, thank you for your service, Andy and Steve, very much. I feel like you've kind of raised me up at this podium.
Thanks, Jennifer. Okay, anybody else wish to just talk on this item? Okay, see you in then. I'll, I'll throw a couple comments, pardon me. Oh, did you miss one? Come on up, Bob. Did you miss one? Oops.
I just can't read my handwriting.
That's probably what it was.
Okay, Bob Holderness, come on up.
Mayor members, Robert G. Holderness appearing today as a private citizen for the City of Folsom. I've appeared before this council next month, will be 39 years since my first appearance, and I've lived in town just over 38 and a half years. I am delighted that you are bringing this next phase of the Lake Natoma Crossing to consideration of the council, and I hope you'll give your staff direction to figure out how to do this in a way that's consistent with the Folsom that we all know and love. I also have to tell you, today is a great day for real environmentalism. The Supreme Court of the United States announced a pre-curiam decision that rolled back the hypothetical environmental theories of life and require litigants to tie their claims to data, to evidence, to facts, not hypotheticals. And tonight, what you heard about the negative impact of this proposal are hypothetical, there's no evidence of that. You'll have an opportunity to review that your staff will and bring it back to you if there are unforeseen environmental consequences and be able to weigh them. I would point out a couple things, just for the record. If I remember rightly, the Friends Save the American River folks sued us over the Lake Natoma Crossing back in the 1990s, and they lost in the trial court, they appealed it, and then they abandoned their appeal. And they're the same group, if members, memory serves me rightly, that sued the City of Folsom when we tried to build a trail for our disabled residents to be able to go visit Lake Natoma from below the Lake Natoma Crossing Bridge. They not only sued us in the trial court and lost, but they sued, they took the case to the appellate court, and they lost again. And by my recollection, they owe you folks, us folks, some money for court costs that they haven't paid yet. So I'm just thinking, before they sue us yet a third time, maybe they'll go back and settle their accounts with the City of Folsom from the last time they sued you. So I just hope you'll go for it. And by the way, there is a solution. It's clear you can program this system, LED lighting, to minimize the negative impact. You can program it to turn it off at night. You can program it in a way that makes it a beautiful asset. It's not a threat to fish, it's not a threat to the environment, it's an enhancement to our community. And please give your staff direction to go forward and figure out how to do this in a good way. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, in response to Mr. Holderness's statement about court costs, allow me to share with you, Sarah did pay the city and our taxpayers in full.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we don't have any more requests to speak on that item. So, a couple comments I, I wanna bring forward is, you know, this, this is something that's been planned since day one, so this isn't something new that we sprung on the community, sprung on any city council. And the city councils have been diligent in not wasting money, because technology wasn't there, we thought the expense was too great, and also, we were sensitive, like you mentioned with the, the lights with the, all the sports field. I'm not a big sports field, light everything up. As you know, I voted against Economy Park for the reasons that it was, you know, the residents didn't want it, we have open space behind it, we have trails behind it, but I was on the losing end of that vote. So, you know, I don't like to say that we're talking out both sides of our mouth, where we're saying we're gonna protect the environment, yet then we vote to put lights where we have an environment with trail system and open space and, and whatnot. So, however, what I am pleased about with those lights is exactly everything you said. They're not pollutant, they're not errant, they're very directed. You know, anyone that's seen any kind of magnitude of, of LED lights, and, and I don't agree with, you know, just because we saw some bridges that, you know, were just trying to show you a bigger effect of what all the possibilities are, not just by size. They're just trying to show you examples of what can be done and what was planned in 1999 when we built that bridge. I think staff deserves a lot of credit for, for resistance on lighting what we anticipated doing from day one. I'm a big fisherman, I'm a big outdoors person, and when I first saw some renderings four or five years ago, I said, "Oh heck no." I didn't like the way they looked, I didn't like the way the technology was gonna possibly reflect light into areas that I, I thought weren't gonna be appropriate. What I do like is, is like Mr. Holderness, and some others already said it, pardon my voice, I'm fighting a cold, these things can be timed. And, you know, this doesn't change the, the small-town, small-town charm we keep talking about. I think it's quite the opposite, it'll enhance it. I mean, we go out of our way and really do a lot of things big in this city, for recognizing our sports teams, our veterans, a whole, whole host of things. Our Fourth of July rodeo. So to me, for a small-town feel, to enhance that feeling is what we all anticipate and planned, and the technology's there now. I, my personal is just one leaving the council here would say, you know, this is what we planned on, this is what we were thinking about when we first built this thing almost 20 years ago. Technology is probably there. I think, my opinion is, I think we ought to go forward and, and look at it, because quite frankly, I don't see the obtrusiveness of, of what I think these lights that everyone has hyperbole about affecting animals and fishing stuff. I mean, I've, I've fished a lot of places where, you know, the lights are on and fishing's great. It doesn't, it doesn't really affect them at night. And I can say that with 40-plus years, 50 years of fishing. Anyway, I, to me, it's like, this is something that's planned since day one, the technology's finally there, we can control it, we can do everything we need to do with it. I do agree, if there has to be a specific process, it should be followed, to make sure all the things, all the i's are dotted, t's are crossed. But to me, to say no without researching it would be disingenuous to the community that anticipated this thing from day one. So my, my one vote, or if you wanna call it that, or my one comment on consensus is, I think you ought to look into it, I think you ought to take it a step further. That's just, just one, one voice of a council member.
And I'm gonna agree with Steve on this, on, you know, I, I remember going back to 99, and we didn't have the money at the time, and frankly, at this point, I'm glad we didn't because there's been so many dramatic improvements in the technology, that I think if we had had the money to do it back then, it wouldn't have been done right.
Oh yeah, one last point, just 'cause Barbara, I agree with your concern, public work money can't be spent on parks.
I understand that.
Yeah, so I, I just wanted to make, so, you know, we're sensitive about where Yeah, so I, I just wanted to make, so, you know, we're sensitive about where money goes and this and that because, again, we want to finish the parks. We've done as best we could with your leadership, earning to finish what we, wasn't done early on. And I wouldn't be proposing this thing if I thought it was going to have a detriment to us still completing the parks that haven't been completed. It's a whole different set of factors and set of pots of money, so to speak.
Well, and to your point, we don't even know what the cost is, so having staff investigate it, I think is the right decision.
Well, there's, there's been some discussions over the last couple of years about what the ballpark cost might be, and it's, it's relatively insignificant based on the last set of numbers I heard. But that was, you know, very much pie in the sky. So I'd be interested in hearing more details about what the actual light will be based on Kelvin and the other alternatives that are being proposed. And I agree that this is something that, you know, gets adjusted as the amount of sunlight changes, and that they don't need to be on all night.
Yeah, and we can actually, in my opinion, again, using the small-town character we all like about Old Town, which I agree, we all do, then let's just fit it to have that feeling, that reflection of what we're still embracing, which is our old heritage. I mean, to me, the sky's the limit with this, good, bad, or otherwise. We can customize to what we want.
16.2 million lights.
Yeah. Andy, you got something?
Yeah, just, I, I mean, I, I have no problem, you know, kind of taking, you know, phase, phase one, A, beta, or something like that, where you, you know, you find out what you're looking at as far as cost. But it certainly seems like there's a lot of alternatives related to what this ultimately looks like and how to control it. So, so there's, seems like there's a, a lot of flexibility that can satisfy a lot of folks.
Yeah, all I want to say is, I'm not necessarily against putting lights, but I'm not necessarily going to be prejudged and say, go out and do me a study that brings me back that answer. Uh-uh. Go out and do a legitimate study, which I feel that our public works would do. And if the answer comes back, hell no, that's the answer. And let's be big enough in this town to accept hell no as an answer. And maybe that's the answer we should have, okay? So all I'm saying, I have no problem, I have no problem looking at anything. But don't preconceive the, the conclusion before we look. I don't, where Mr. Holderness disappeared, I don't see him. But I, but I always say, you know, you say you want facts.
We need lights on, Bob, so we can keep track of them.
Yeah. I mean, you have a bell on them, so maybe a light that blinks. But, you know, you, you say, Bob, you need to, to say proof of damage to the thing. I had the same concern about economic development on tourism. Many times I say, prove to me and quantify, what the heck, you say I gained $80 million here, there, and elsewhere. I'm willing to trust you. I'm willing to be big and accept it. But don't use different standards. You call it one way and then call it the other way. But I, I say I trust the staff and the city manager, been trained well, to go out and do a good study and come back and let us, let us look at it and rethink about it. And if that's the answer, then that's the answer, okay? And I believe, even though the, the environmental people always get claimed to be in, I argue my son on this all the time nowadays, about you don't have to prove everything. If your gut tells you it's right, then it's right. But I'm willing to, as, as another one individual on this council, is to say, give us a study and do it fair and thorough. And if it proves out that that's a good deal, then let's take a hard look at it.
What, Andy, think?
Yeah, no.
Okay, so I think the direction from the council is this, you know, start studying a little bit more and take it the next step, and obviously work through the city manager's office to present it to the, the new council as, as things progress.
Yeah, we will. I think the, the appropriate steps at this point would be to come up with some kind of informal design, to see what the light color would be, work with engineers, and, and then obviously engaging any kind of environmental review and come back with a cost and, and start there.
Okay. Good. You agree with that?
Yeah, in that cost, is there a way to, and maybe, maybe you can answer this, but incorporate like a forecasted ROI of what we can expect for economic development with it? So it's not just one focus on this is what the cost is, but yet this is the cost, this is what it brings us in a five-year span or something?
I'm sure we can include that, yeah.
That'd be cool.
Is that something that, well, because I think the preliminary number needs to be basically kind of a construction cost, and I'm not sure that the Public Works Department is the best group to.
No, we would, we would obviously seek some expertise in that realm.
Be coming up with recommendations for economic development.
We need to get some counsel on that, Councilmember Howell.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Not that, I'm, I'm sure you could be very capable of doing that, Dave, but I trust your.
It might not be accurate.
I can, I trust your construction, engineering instincts better than your economic development ones.
I agree.
Okay. For the record, that's what I meant, so. I trust you too, Dave.
Well, now we have trust in me for all of the dais here. I think we got good direction to the city manager and her staff. So thank you so much to the Phillips folks for the presentation, and I assume you'll keep working with Mr. Nugent and with the direction we just gave, so. Okay, with that, call the next item, please.
Our next item is new business, item 8B, resolution of commendation honoring Steve Miklos. And I have three speakers.
Well, okay. I, I, am I supposed to be doing this to myself? Thank you.
I'll take over.
No, I, I, I think, and I think, I don't know what the plan was, but I'm going to suggest that since it's going to be the, us up here talking, that we might as well just stay up here.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm guessing you guys are more comfortable that, and Andy forgot the bottoms of his pants.
Are you, are you scared of having these two men down there close to the audience? Is that?
No.
Oh, okay.
I don't know what you have planned. So do you want to start with? We want to start with the speakers?
Yeah, well, you have speakers?
Yes, we do.
Absolutely. It's, it's your speakers first, okay. Please call the, call the next speaker.
Our first speaker is Mike Barnbaum, followed by Sarah Kaligian, and then Bob Holderness.
Thank you. I have some bittersweet memories working with Mayor Miklos, most of them with Secog, not so much directly on this council. But Steve, you've been a tremendous asset to the six-county, 22-city Sacramento region. Your service is much appreciated, what you've done for the transportation industry, infrastructure, and hopefully, depending on how some other dominoes fall in early 2019, that some higher aspirations in an 80-member chamber, chamber will be realized. We know there's a lot of work ahead to see that, that that happen. But your, your service on the Folsom City Council, on Secog, and the various boards and commissions throughout the region, lots of things would not have been able to get done without your service and your leadership and attention to detail to the issues facing the region. I will always also forever remember our mentioning of Devonshire and our favorite National League baseball team, the Los Angeles Dodgers.
Yep, I remember.
As my favorite baseball team, and of all the 30, is the Oakland Athletics and the Green and Gold. Thankfully, I can share that we only played each other four times this regular season, and it was break even at 2-2. We do not play each other in 2019 or in 2020 during any of the 162 regular season game schedule. And looking and reflecting back during my Thanksgiving break this past weekend, that's one of the biggest things I feel very thankful for. And hopefully, our goals will be 162-0 the next two seasons for both ball clubs.
Thanks, Mike.
So again, thank you for, thank you for your service, and look forward to hopefully seeing you back here on December 11th with the new member of, of the council accepting your seat.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all. I'll stay in the first row because I'll be speaking on 8C very shortly. Thank you.
Thanks.
Next speaker, Sarah Kaligian.
Just turn him off. Let him just stay with him. Good evening, Mayor Miklos, city council members. My name is Sarah Kaligian. I'm superintendent of Folsom-Cordova Unified School District and also a proud resident of the city of Folsom. And actually, I'm speaking to both items and honoring both Mayor Miklos and Councilmember Moran on behalf of Folsom-Cordova Unified School District. I want to offer our sincere gratitude to you, Mr. Miklos and Mr. Moran, for your years in service supporting city partnerships that enrich the lives of our students and families. While it would be impossible to list every way the city contributes to educational success, I wanted to take a moment to provide some highlights from recent years. Looking back, it seems nearly every city department in Folsom has played in some role in our student successes. And I'm going to list a few of them. School safety. Our schools and students are incredibly blessed to have such a strong partnership with the Folsom Police Department. Our three school resource officers have done an exceptional job building positive, trusting relationships on our campuses. Community Service Day. Each year, thousands of volunteers fan out across the city to improve their community, and we are honored that our schools have been annual beneficiaries through beautiful landscaping upgrades. The Folsom Public Library has done so much to advance literacy through tutoring, enrichment activities, and most recently, its generous My First Library Card Program, which provides all Folsom kindergarten students library cards. As Folsom expands and plans for the future, we are grateful to have you as collaborative partners throughout the entire process of planning new schools for future generations of students and families. On a related note, we are also grateful for your support of Measure G, which, as you can see just by driving by Sutter Middle School, Oak Chan Elementary, and so many other locations, is taking shape through modern, state-of-the-art learning spaces. Parks and Recreation has been a longtime partner through its many enrichment activities, camps, and cave teen centers, which provide excellent, safe after-school alternatives for our middle school students. And in recent years, the Folsom Zoo has welcomed high school science and engineering students to develop and install impressive habitat projects, allowing them to connect their classroom and learning to the real world. Your traffic team works collaboratively with us to design and improve safe school entry and exit park patterns for our students and our families. And your staff here at the city hall have a long history of welcoming our students and teachers to learn more about the city's history, how governance works, and other important aspects of running a community. I could probably go on, but I again want to thank both of you on behalf of our schools for your leadership and support, for partnerships that enhance the experience for our Folsom students and school communities. Our best wishes to both of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
Mr. Mayor and members, I just want to appear one time for both of you. Extend my congratulations and greetings to both of you and great careers in front of our, for our city and represent our, our citizens. Couple of things that I think are important to point out. Each of you, in your own right, are successful business owners of longstanding. It's not like you started a business yesterday, and we don't know whether they'll be successful. You've both been in business for a long time. On the other hand, each of you has a wealth of experience in the public sector, working for government, with government, and those two aspects of your careers have been very important in subtle ways for our city in ways that our residents have no idea. When we faced a huge downturn of the Great Recession, the two of you, more than other council members, knew how to deal with the challenges of budget, employment, layoffs, retirements, and all of those things that kept our city afloat when other cities were floundering in red ink. Maybe even more importantly, or more visible certainly, is if, if you want to know what Mayor Steve's legacy is, or Mayor Andy's legacy, just drive around town. Folsom Lake Crossing, Lake Natoma Crossing, Johnny Cash Trail, the big freeway interchange at Intel, Light Rail, HOV lanes on Highway 50, Folsom High School, the great 69-acre campus of Folsom High School. But for the work of the city, that might not have happened, or at least not at that location. And each of you had a role in making that happen. And then there are the more fun things. The mayor's golf tournament, the Community Service Day, all of those things, they're your living legacies. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Well, I'm there.
Everett Palmer.
Thank you. I didn't turn in a blue card. I apologize.
No, she was just imagining that because the blue slip's not actually there.
It's funny how you forget the protocols after just a short time. But thank you for recognizing me.
I'm not even going to hit the timer.
My name is Everett Palmer. I'm, prior to moving out four months ago, I was a 23-year resident of Folsom City Hall. But personally, I want to thank you two for your support of me and your support on behalf of all of the staff that I was either a part of or led in this city for that whole time. Your leadership was certainly welcome and valued and, and expert when it needed to be. You always had an uncanny ability, both of you, to steady a ship during tumultuous times. You know, we did go through, as Bob mentioned, some very serious economic challenges, and your guidance during those times were very valuable. And your guidance during the, when we had times of plenty, and not just necessarily living for the day, but planning for the future and remembering to set aside some resources for times when things wouldn't be so rosy, and to have a long-term vision of what it would take to grow a very humble, very small town into something that is, still remains humble today, but is, is, is really, what can say it better than the number-one place to raise a family? So thank you for your service to me and to your staff and to your community. I, for one, am very grateful. Congratulations on a great career.
Thank you, Everett.
Is another card coming? This is not unusual. This man would be late.
Thank you, Mayor, fellow council members. On behalf of the Folsom Athletic Association and the Friends of the Folsom Parkway's, I would like to thank you both for your constant support and service to those wonderful groups that have collaborated with you and the partnership that you guys have allowed so that the community can make the community what it is. Our profession likes to say, building community through people, parks, and programs. And you guys have been a model of that for us. And the range is large, and you're going to have some wonderful things read that could go on and on, and we didn't capture all of them probably, but there's a lot of them. And, you know, it's for many years, but all the way right to the end here. You know, one of the things that we like to say in the sports world is, finish strong. And I think you guys can certainly be proud that you've done that. And helping us right up to the end here with being willing to put yourself out there in uncomfortable positions. I don't think it was uncomfortable for either one of you because you believe in this. And that's helping our new employees get to know each other through city links and putting yourself in a dunk tank in behalf of our, our employees. And, you know, we've changed so much that it takes some proactive means to make sure we continue to be strong and good, and so we can all be proud of the community that we live, work, and play in. And, you know, again, to finish that strong, to have such a career that you've had and such an impact on so many people's lives, and, and how we'll know we'll know how well we did on some of these when we watch our younger kids turn into your seats and how well they do. And that will be really the true testament for some of us. So, anyway, again, on behalf of the Folsom Athletic Association, the Friends of Folsom Parkway's, and as an employee of yours, thank you very much.
Thank you. Very much appreciated.
Okay, now, Steve mentioned to me that I could -- I'm in charge, okay? So now I'm in charge. And being a senior person on this council by far, I can change my mind. So I've just changed my mind. We're coming down to that podium down there, that microphone, and we're going to make this a formal presentation of what we have to give to Steve and Andy. And we're going to do that because, you know, we're not talking about something insignificant. We're talking about 40 years of council service. And if anybody thinks that's easy, you're out of your mind, okay? So, I ask my colleagues, since we are a team, we're always a team, whether we win or lose, we're still a team. We're coming down there. I'm going to ask them to come down there, and Carrie, I ask you to indulge me in this one. And we'll go down, and what we have between Roger and Carrie and I, we're going to take turns reading the proclamation that we're going to then give an award that we want to do. So, if you'll join me, we're going down. That's -- that's -- That's one reason I wanted to get Andy down here, to expose him, you know? I mean, yeah, excuse that one. You can see we didn't orchestrate this. Okay, I'm the first reader. Roger's behind me, and Carrie's going to fill it up. And we'll take them one at a time, and our first presentation is for current Mayor Miklos. So here goes. It's a resolution accommodation honoring Steve Miklos for his outstanding service to the city of Folsom. Whereas Steve Miklos was first elected to the Folsom City Council in November 1994, one of the best elections run, by the way, currently serves as mayor and previously served 10 different years as mayor and five different years as vice mayor. And whereas during his term on the city council, the city of Folsom added numerous parks, I can attest to that, many miles of bike trails, and hundreds of acres of open space. And whereas during his term on the city council, Steve served on a variety of regional committees and commissions in his leadership role, including representing Folsom on SECAG, LACCO, ACAP, and the SOI Subcommittee, the Capital Southeast Connector JPA, and many other regional coordination efforts. And whereas Steve participated in and helped lead the city of Folsom through years of strategic planning and careful preparation leading up to Folsom annexation of its sphere of influence south of Highway 50.
Part two. And whereas Steve served on the city council through particularly challenging economic times, ensuring that Folsom remains in a solid fiscal position and that residents enjoy the continued high quality of life despite the daunting economic environment. And whereas Steve took his many skills to the national level on behalf of our residents, frequently representing and leading regional delegations to Washington, D.C., meeting with key national decision-makers, and testifying before Congress on critical Folsom issues. And whereas during his term on the city council, the following unique recreational facilities were built: the Folsom Aquatic Center, the Cummings Skate Park, the Hinkle Creek Nature Center, the Folsom Sports Complex, the Willow -- sorry, the Willow Hill Cross Country Course, the Georgia Murray Library and Veterans Memorial, the Senior Arts -- Senior and Arts Center, and the Zoo Barnyard Experience. And?
Whereas Steve helped launch Folsom's Community Service Day, the popular Mayor's Golf Tournament to raise funds for the cave teen centers, brought the annual Vladi Divak Basketball Camp to Folsom, and started the annual Mayor's Bike Ride to the Capitol during May as Bike Month. And whereas Steve has acquired widespread recognition for service and achievements, and I'm changing this here, both within and outside the city of Folsom, now therefore the City Folsom Council and the citizens of this community do hereby commend and thank Steve Miklos for his outstanding and faithful service to the city of Folsom and convey our best wishes to him and his future endeavors. Passed and approved this 27th day of November 2018.
Thank you, Steve.
Round two. The resolution accommodation honoring Andy Morin for his outstanding service to the city of Folsom. Whereas Andy Morin was first elected to the Folsom City Council in November 2002 and previously served five different years as mayor and two different years as vice mayor. And whereas Andy Morin, involvement in community service started through his local family business as a sponsor of many sports teams, and his wife Kathy active involvement with the Folsom Sea Otters Swim Team. First time I saw a sea otter event, he was running it. And whereas Andy's involvement in local government started with the Lenby Park Expansion Committee that developed the guidelines and community sports -- community support for the Folsom Aquatic Center. And whereas during his term on the city council, the Parks and Recreation System added numerous parks and many miles of bike trails and hundreds of acres of open space.
And whereas during his term on the city council, the following unique recreational facilities were built: the Folsom Aquatic Center, the Cummings Family Skate Park, the Hinkle Creek Nature Center, the Folsom Sports Complex, the Willow Hill Cross Country Course, the Georgia Murray Library, and Veterans Memorial, the Senior and Arts Center, and the Zoo Barnyard Experience. And whereas during his term on the city council, Andy served on a myriad of regional committees and commissions in his leadership roles, including representing Folsom on the Folsom Eldorado County JPA, Regional Transit District, Sacramento Regional County Sanitation District, and many other regional coordination efforts. And?
Whereas Andy Morin has been a strong supporter of the Folsom-Cordova Unified School District Joint Use Agreement, joint park development, and an active supporter of the school bonds that helped develop joint-use recreation facilities for the city of Folsom. And whereas Andy's tremendous ability to develop consensus and articulate nuanced elements of complicated issues helped the city work towards successful, balanced outcomes on tough, controversial issues. Now therefore, the Folsom City Council and the citizens of this community do hereby commend and thank Andy Morin for his outstanding and faithful service to the city of Folsom and convey our best wishes to him and his future endeavors that don't involve wearing a tie. Passed and approved this 27th day of November 2018.
Well, actually not going to say a lot with this cold, but, you know, someone asked me what the highlight of my career was, and I said, all of it. Really, all of it. You know, I've been very blessed to have great colleagues. In fact, a quick story. We were talking about some of the things that were built when Andy was -- even before on the council. Andy and I met trying to get the aquatic center built. And then from that point on, we became very close friends and just put our heads to the grindstone and started figuring out ways to catch -- play catch-up on a lot of facilities that weren't built early on, and we didn't have the money, but we figured out how to do it. So, I want to thank you, Andy, for not only being a great colleague of mine, but just being a great friend for all these years. I've been very blessed. I know Everett's here and Elaine, and I mean, I can go on and on and on. I'm not going to, and you're welcome. But I've been very blessed to have just such great employees. I mean, this city, this -- these residents are just really honored to have the type of employees that this city has. I mean, we allow them to use their own noodles, as we say, their own brains. We give them the latitude to succeed. We give them the opportunity to succeed and to aspire. Everett, I think when you and I first met, you were IT, and then, you know, he finished a career as one of my city managers. I mean, that's just -- but what really is really special, and as I mentioned earlier on some of the economic hardships that we had, and one of the hardest days I ever had was when we had to lay off 65 employees, when we had to close a facility next door, when the state wasn't paying the bills for that correctional center. What was really remarkable about that, including some layoffs we just did, I had city employees thank me for the opportunity to work here as I'm laying them off. They're thanking me. And that says a lot. I think we're -- you know, people say, you know, we're one big family. We are absolutely one big family. And it was certainly our pleasure, Lynn, as you pointed out, for us to give back and get in that dunk tank along with the fire and police chief. That's just because we're one family. We treat them with respect. They treated us with respect, and we're just one family and one team and with one goal. That was just to make Folsom the best community we possibly could be, not only then, now, but obviously in the future. So, don't have much more to say because I could go on and on and on, and I'm sure you don't want to hear me anymore. But I did wear a tie, so at least we got that part down. But anyway, so thank you so much for all the accolades, and more importantly, thank you to the community of Folsom for the opportunity and certainly the honor and privilege to allow me to be on your city council and your mayor for all these years, and I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Yeah, a lot of times we cancel the last meeting in November, so with that in mind, I got rid of the ties that I own, so I had to adjust accordingly. But thank you for this, everybody, for the recognition. It truly has been a labor of love, very rewarding. The thing I will miss the most are the people. I will not miss evening meetings, but I will miss the people at those evening meetings. So, but I do look forward in the future to running into folks over time. It's going to be a joy to continue to live in this city and occasionally come to a meeting and speak to the city council. But just for the past two years, Carrie, Roger, Ernie, and Steve, you know, every two-year cycle, it's amazing how much gets accomplished and how quickly it goes. And it seems like, you know, I never envisioned being on the city council for 16 years when I first ran, but one of the hardest decisions is deciding not to run because of the rewards. And it's tough. I know Steve just kind of went through the same thing, deciding not to run. But, you know, there will always be great people in this community, and I thank everybody for the support. Like I've always emphasized, and I sincerely appreciate, thanks, Sarah, for coming out, but our schools are so important and the people that run those schools, and that includes Folsom Lake College, but it's just vital to this community and the partnership that we at the city have with the school. So, thank you, Sarah. Our business community as well. You know, it's just vital that we have a vibrant business community support for the business community and working with the Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau and Economic Development. You know, with strong city, strong business, and strong schools, there's just nothing this community can't do. And so, lastly, I'll focus on the people I've worked with the most, which is the city of Folsom folks. You know, around 400, 450 employees that just do so much here. You know, a full-service city model that we're very proud of. And, you know, everybody here today and everybody who sees this later on, you know, my sincere appreciation for all the people I've worked with that have retired, and there have been many retirements recently at the city of Folsom. So, not only new council members, but a lot of great new city employees as well. So, and certainly thanks to all the city employees that are currently working for the city of Folsom. And, you know, I see a number of you out there here this evening, but thanks for making this just such a great place for me to raise my family. And thankfully, my family allowed me the time to invest so much in this community. So, with that, thank you. Thank you all so much. I will sincerely miss all of you. But again, when Tuesday night comes around, and when Tuesday night comes around in January, it's going to be a good feeling, but I will be thinking of all of you. Thank you.
Next item is city manager reports. Thank you. First and foremost and most importantly, my personal thanks to Mayor Miklos and Councilmember Morin for your years of service and also your commitment and kindness to me personally. I so appreciate your many contributions and accomplishments, your sense of humor and your professionalism. It has truly been an honor serving as your city manager, and I will miss you both. In other news, you'll see displayed in the chamber tonight our new city flag, which was adopted at the last council meeting, which was designed by Vista Delago students Sierra Hansen -- Sierra Stewart and Sienna Hansen. And the mayor and I will be going up to Vista Delago on Thursday morning and giving them their own flag to hang at the school, presenting it to the students. I updated you at the last meeting that there is PG&E work going on along Natoma to make way for an underground gas line. That was supposed to be five days a week during the evening that involves overnight closure from 8:00 p.m. to 4:00 a.m. We're now moving that to a seven-day closure at the request of PG&E, again, only at night, so that they can get their crews up to work in the Paradise Fire area. So, that will speed up the process here and reduce the time that that street is down over the next month. We have our holiday toy drive going on, so if you want to help make the holidays special for Folsom families in need, please select an ornament from the trees in the lobby of either the Folsom Police Department or the Folsom Fire Department Station 35, or you can bring a gift of your own choosing, unopened and unwrapped, and drop it off at the police department or, again, Fire Station 35. We have our special holiday lights going on at the Folsom Zoo Sanctuary, and this is a magical winter wonderland that will await you with thousands of feet of bright and colorful lights. This event will be from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. on December 1st, 7th, 8th, 14th through the 23rd, and 26th through the 30th, and you can purchase tickets at our website, folsom.ca.us. Santa's sleigh is returning to Folsom December 9th through the 13th. Santa and Mrs. Claus will be visiting neighbor hoods throughout Folsom, and Santa's elves will be part of this procession, and they'll collect non-perishable canned goods to help stock the Twin Lakes Food Banks for the holidays. And you can follow their route at www.facebook.com/folsompoa. And finally, the 36th Annual California International Marathon is this Sunday, December 2nd. That brings 9,000 runners and thousands of spectators to Folsom and the Sacramento area. The marathon will begin near the Folsom Dam at 7:00 a.m., and it will include several road closures. Folsom Auburn Road from Folsom Dam Road to Greenback Lane, Folsom Lake Crossing Road from East Natoma to Folsom Auburn Road, and Oak Avenue Parkway to Folsom Auburn Road to Santa Juanita Avenue will be closed from 3:30 a.m. to 9:30 a.m. to make way for the runners. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Yes, my final comments. And they'll be very simple. Let's see, I actually did an Eagle Court of Honor recognition Sunday evening for Travis Walker, so that was my last one of those. All of us up here know how many of those we do in this community. Now, I was trying to think over 16 years, how many I've personally done, and it's over 100, I'm sure. So, it was -- that was bittersweet as far as recognizing that individual, but understanding that I wouldn't be doing that again as a council member. And it was also the same troop that my two boys earned their eagle, so it worked out very nice, and they recognized me there, which is a very, very nice thing. Good luck to the Folsom High Football Team. This Saturday is a section championship at Sac State, and they play Monterey Trail, so good luck to them. And then, lastly, the Vista Delago Girls' Cross Country Team is a state champion. So, congratulations to them.
so congratulations to them. And I know at times we'll recognize these folks, and it might be a nice for the council in the near future to recognize that team as a, really a tremendous accomplishment for Vista Del Lago Girls' Cross Country Team.
We actually have them coming to the December 11th meeting.
Oh, fantastic. So I will, I will see that, so. All right, very good. Thank you, and that's it.
I think the Christmas tree lighting that is gonna be done by the Historic District Association is Friday. I think the tree gets lit at 7:30. So that is always a super, super fun event, so I'm gonna keep my fingers crossed that it doesn't rain on, on Friday night. Is Palladio tomorrow?
Palladio was actually on the last Sunday. It's already taken place.
Okay, sorry, I missed it. So the tree's already lit at Palladio, in case you can't make it on Friday. The skating rink has been open now for a week or a couple of weeks. If you've never done that, I encourage you to at least give it a try. It's a really, really fun event. You can't really hurt yourself that badly. I grew up on the East Coast, so I actually own ice skates and the whole nine yards, so I'm gonna try to make it down there during the holiday season, and I encourage others to do the same. We had Small Business, Small Business Saturday this past weekend, but I will continue to encourage people to shop in Folsom in our actual stores. Not that we don't love Amazon, but, you know, it's, it's good for our local economy to actually patronize those businesses, so I encourage people to do that. And the next thing that I want to say is, on a personal basis, I have been serving with Steve on the, in some way, shape, or form since Steve appointed me to the Planning Commission when he first got elected 24 years ago. I've known Steve for probably close to 30 years through rotary connections, and I want to thank both of you for an enormous, enormous amount of work over the course of the last 16 and plus years with your, your on the Planning Commission. It's been great working with you. We haven't always agreed on things, but we found a way to get stuff done, and I hope that you will continue to be very, very proud of all of the things that you have contributed to making this the wonderful city that it is, and I thank you both for your service.
Thank you, Carrie.
That and Merry Christmas.
Roger?
No, I just wanted to say also, you know, I've only been in this seat for 24 months almost, so almost two years, but we've had our, Andy and Steve, we've had our back and forth since about 2012, but you've always been real. You've always given me real, honest opinions and feedback, and it's helped me tremendously. I don't think I would have been brought up to speed as fast as I was, so I greatly appreciate that. I am one of the products of what you've done in the community. I graduated in 2001. The great school that, oh, she just left, that she's talking about, Folsom High, I was a graduate of it. So, so this is kind of what you're raising, you are raising folks to come in and, and jump in the saddle and give back to the community in, in your footsteps. So thank you so much. And, yeah, thanks for your service. And Carrie, I just wanted to say congratulations on your recent reelection.
Thank you.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
You forget me tonight, huh? Okay.
Can't help but looking right at you.
Well, I wish I could say I, I had some disagreements with both Andy and Steve, but, you know. But, you know, it's not what you disagree on, it's what you do agree upon and what you do get done, and we've done that quite, quite well, I believe. And while we may argue as individuals occasionally, we are a team, because when they criticize the council, they criticize all five of us. Whether you voted yes or no on an item, we all stand together, and that's just the way it works, and you gotta realize that. I'm gonna see them around, 'cause I know darn well I'm gonna see them around. But I want to reiterate what Linda Page said in regards to FAA, Folsom Athletic Association, and the, and the trails. These two people have been as strong a supporter for our kids in this town as anybody, I can tell you that. My 20 years on the park commission was not, would not have been halfway as enjoyable it was without their help. And they stood with us through a lot of hard ups and downs, but we got them, we got them done. And so all I want to say is the best to you, and I'll see more of you, I know it.
Thank you. Couple, cook a, couple of quick ones. Apologize again, it's cold. Congratulations to Kikaman. We had a nice 20th anniversary celebration last Friday night. It was an honor to be with them in their celebration. The Consul General from Japan was there, and he actually spoke very highly of Folsom. And Mr. Mogi and his wife, as always, were very, very gracious, and as always, he's invited us to go to Japan. So Miss Cindy Manager, I think you need to find a way to get somebody back there. We haven't been there in, since 9th, since 2003 or so. So, yeah, he still reminds me every, every time I see him, so. But it was, congratulations to them. It's just been a wonderful partner in the community, and as I said that night, not only a partner in the community, they've actually, and we tallied it up, they've actually contributed over $1 million in donations to this community in 20 years. And that's, that's quite a bit. Not to mention that when they come out and help and assist in different events, but just a pure financial donation of a million dollars in that 20 years. That's just incredible. And I apologize, I really did not mean to leave out the relationship with the school district over my 24-plus years. I good, I see Sarah sitting out there, so wearing your school board hat for a moment, Sarah. Thank you. I mean, when I first got elected, and some of my past colleagues will agree with me, and even my current colleagues, the relationship was very, very strained, if you will. And we just took the attitude that we're all one, and we taught them to be all one, and, and it's just morphed into just, I mean, one of, one of those relationships that I hear up, not only up and down the state, but across the country, where cities would just love to have the relationship we have with our schools and vice versa. So if you'd please bring it back to your board and suit and your superintendent that I, for one, as one member of the community, let alone the city council, can't thank you guys enough for being just great, open partners, willing to, to go all that extra miles and look at different ways to get things accomplished, all in the name of one thing and one thing only: our kids. And so I just want to say thank you and make sure that gets passed along as well. There's a lot I could say. I'm not, it's too difficult, to say the least. It's, it's hard to give up something, I think Everett said, it's hard to walk away from something you've absolutely enjoyed for 24 years, and plus my one year on Planning Commission for 25 years. But it's time. I think we got good leadership coming behind us. I think we got, I still believe, we still have the absolute best city employees in the entire country. I still believe we have the best city in the entire country, and I've seen a lot of them in my career. And so I wish all of you the best of luck. Thank you for being such great partners with me up here, for all the people that are sitting here, all the people that have been in the past, that'll be going forward in the future. I hope to continue all the great things we did, and we built a, a strong foundation that'll never crumble, and I think you guys can do nothing but just continue to go upward and of bigger and better things. So with that, we'll say good evening, meeting adjourned at 8:27.